Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the committee of the board and state that the committee is being held compliant with all the provisions of the Old Public Meetings Act, Bill nineteen seventy-five, Chapter two thirty-one. It was promptly noticed and has been posted and certified by the court. Alro, please.
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Here.
Ms. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Schindler.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Yeah.
Do they join me in blackface?
Okay.
Like the United States of America and to the Republic which stands for nation, our God, and freedom of the free and just society.
Detail. Hurry. Go.
As we have the Department of Ceremonies and Patrolmen, I'd like to put it up with the first five members. Where an established effective law and order is vital to the survival of the civil civilized society and a dedicated professional police department is essential to providing for the safety of our residents and visitors. And whereas we wish to recognize the distinguished career and accomplishment of Lieutenant Christopher Rojak, who has honorably served the residents of Paccamboro for twenty-five years. Whereas Lieutenant Christopher Rojak commenced his service of the Paccam Police Office and was sworn in on July twenty-second, nineteen ninety-eight. And whereas Christopher Rojak became a detective on July fourth, two thousand and three, he worked undercover for the Sussex County Prosecutor's Office through January fourth, two thousand and five. And whereas Christopher Rojak was promoted to the rank of Police Sergeant on January seventh, two thousand and eight, and whereas on February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, Christopher Rojak was sworn in as Lieutenant. Now therefore, on Mayor Mike's terms, along with the Paccamboro Council, Paccamboro Miss Valley, and on behalf of the citizens of the Paccam, to give our recognition and honor Lieutenant Christopher Rojak, who provided twenty-five years of outstanding and dedicated years of service, we offer our heartfelt gratitude and appreciation for all your contributions to Paccam and best wishes on your retirement. And here as we're planning September seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, as Lieutenant Christopher Rojak takes over Paccam. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all for attending the Hopacan Police Department's award promotional ceremony. Over the years, we do our best to recognize officers, dispatchers, and citizens in our community for going above and beyond. Over the last few years, our award process was slowed down due to the pandemic, but tonight, we're stretching further back than normal to recognize amazing accomplishments from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two. The first person we are recognizing tonight will be Officer Lalo. Please come forward. On October twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty-one, Officer Lalo responded to Marn Road on a report of a female in labor. Upon arrival, without hesitation, Officer Lalo jumped into action, assisting the husband and caring for his wife. After Officer Lalo's assessment, it was determined they needed to deliver the baby at the house. Officer Lalo and the father assisted in the delivery of a baby girl. After the birth, Officer Lalo assured the mother that the daughter was healthy, cleaned the child, and gave her to her mother. During the call for service, Officer Lalo maintained his composure and never lost focus that the main concern was for the mother and the infant. Officer Lalo's calming demeanor kept everyone in the situation calm. With this, I award Officer Lalo the Stork Award. Next up, Lieutenant Tracy, Sergeant Siri, and Sergeant Fulman. On February tenth, two thousand and twenty, Lieutenant Tracy, Sergeant at the time, Sergeant Siri, and Sergeant Fulman, at the time, responded to DeVito Trail on a medical call. On arrival, they found the patient lying on the floor in the living room with family members performing CPR. At that time, Sergeant Siri, a certified EMT, assessed the patient and found a faint pulse. Sergeant Siri immediately began rescue breathing. After a few cycles of rescue breathing and reassessment, the patient was found to no longer have a pulse. Lieutenant Tracy, Sergeant Siri, and Sergeant Fulman immediately began CPR and set up the AED. During the reassessment, it was found that patrol regained a pulse from the patient. Hopacan EMS and St. Clair's paramedics arrived on scene and the patient was transported to the hospital with a pulse. Their quick thinking, rendering CPR and rescue breathing saved the patient's life. With this, I award Lieutenant Tracy, Detective Sergeant Siri, and Sergeant Fulman with the Life Saving Award. All right, next up, Sergeant McPully, Officer Van Dersky, and Officer Lalo. On September sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, Sergeant McPully, Officer Van Dersky, and Officer Lalo responded to Knox Way for the report of an unconscious male. Upon arrival, Officer Lalo located the male unconscious and unresponsive on the floor. He immediately radioed for Sergeant McPully and Officer Van Dersky that medical equipment was needed and started CPR. When Sergeant McPully and Officer Van Dersky arrived, the AED was set up while Officer Lalo continued CPR. During CPR, two shots were delivered to the patient, and through the continuation of CPR, the patient regained a pulse and began to breathe on his own. Hopacan EMS arrived on scene and transported the patient to the hospital. Several days later after this call, the patient came to police headquarters to thank these officers for saving his life. And tonight, no one knows this, but me and the captain, we have a special guest. Joseph, will you please come forward? Their quick thinking, rendering CPR saved Joseph's life. With this, I award Sergeant McPully, Officer Lalo, and Officer Van Dersky the Life Saving Award. Next, Sergeant Siri, Officer Getner, and Officer Capps. On February twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, Sergeant Siri, Officer Getner, and Officer Capps responded to Coolidge Trail on a report of a suicide with a gun. Upon arrival, Sergeant Siri found the patient slumped over in the bathroom with a gunshot wound from the left side of his face. He was partially alert but nonverbal at the time. Patrols immediately provided first aid, advising dispatch for medics and a helicopter. The patient was transported to Worstedown Medical Center where he lived. Due to their quick thinking and rendering first aid, they saved the patient's life. With this, I award Sergeant Siri, Officer Getner, and Officer Capps the Life Saving Award. Officer Van Dersky. On August twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, while on loan to the DEA, Officer Van Dersky was on surveillance in Brooklyn, New York, when he and other agents noticed that their target exited their residence and put something in his vehicle. The target then returned to his residence, and when he exited again, he was carrying a duffel bag. Three males approached the target and pistol-whipped him. At that point, Officer Van Dersky and the other agents intervened and stopped the assault. Two of the three men fled on foot, and one was apprehended. They recovered two guns and a taser on scene. Van Dersky's quick response to this assault saved this man from serious injury or death. With this, I award Officer Van Dersky the Honorable Service Award. The other two agents are here in the back as well. Officer Kern, Officer Zabida, and Sergeant Janosco, please come forward. These three officers received an award in Byron Township for their actions, but I would like to recognize them tonight as well. On January thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-two, Sergeant Janosco, Officer Kern, and Officer Zabida responded to Byron Township to assist with a vehicle that drove into a pond. Upon their arrival, the vehicle was sinking into the pond. Byron officers were already in the water, swimming out with a female, and the male was floating unconscious in the water. Officer Kern and Zabida immediately entered the water and swam out to assist with getting the male out of the water. Once near the shoreline, Sergeant Janosco entered the water and helped pull the male to shore. The male did not have a pulse, and patrol started CPR. They were able to restore a pulse and breathing before the male was transported to the hospital. I would like to recognize these officers for job well done for their quick response and action in assisting the residents and officers in our neighboring jurisdiction. Detective Press. Throughout two thousand and twenty-two, Detective David Kraus has been instrumental in the advancement of the Hopacan Police Department. Assigned to the Detective Bureau, Detective Kraus also splits his time with the Sussex County Prosecutor's Office Narcotics, Gangs, and Guns Task Force. While responsible for his assigned cases, Detective Kraus has always assisted any officer in any way he could in clearing their investigation. As a former field training officer, Detective Kraus has never lost the drive to help fellow officers become proactive and continue to provide training and knowledge to be successful throughout their careers. Some of the assistance Detective Kraus has provided to other officers is the use of facial recognition software, surveillance equipment, interview skills, countless contacts with other agencies, a list can go on. During two thousand and twenty-two, Detective Kraus has closed out every case assigned to him with an exceptional manner. He is not one to let cases sit or go stagnant. He works with the drive to stop crime, to solve cases, and to make an impact through his work. Detective Kraus has never lost the drive to be proactive, even after twenty-four years of service. That drive can be seen not only in his work with this department, but also through his work with the county task force. From two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three, Detective Kraus has assisted in over thirty investigations involving the distribution of illegal drugs throughout Sussex County. He has personally been the case detective on three investigations, all which resulted in first-degree charges being filed against defendants. Detective Kraus continues to be positive, proactive, and influential member of the Hopacan Police Department. For his continued hard work and dedication, he is recognized as Officer of the Year and presented with the Chief's Award for twenty twenty-two. We do have a civilian award to give out as well. I'd like to call up Officer Kern.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. I'd like to call Isabella Barberio. On the night of July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the Hopacanboro Ninety-One One Center received a call from Isabella Barberio. This was a highly inappropriate call for service, as the victim was located in West Quirring, New Jersey. Ms. Barberio was in a Discord internet video chat with over a dozen other individuals, when one of them, a fifteen-year-old pregnant girl, began to attempt suicide by overdose and cutting herself. All the individuals in the video chat left the chat and took no action to assist this girl, with the exception of this twelve-year-old. She had the resolve and fortitude to not only call anyone home, but she remained in the chat and assisted the dispatcher in directing the victim on how to fashion a tourniquet of key information so that the Hopacan police were able to contact the Sussex Police Constabulary in the United Kingdom. Even after the arrival, the Hopacan officers at her home, Ms. Barberio, remained a lead communicator with the victim. She helped keep the victim conscious and showed she truly cared about helping a complete stranger. The Hopacan police were able to direct the Sussex Police Constabulary to the victim where they had to force entry into her apartment. Ms. Barberio's actions ultimately resulted in saving the life of this young woman. She showed the selfless qualities of service and compassion for others that make her among the best of the Hopacanboro. Due to her actions on July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the Hopacanboro Police are presenting her with the Police Department's Civilian Service Award. Thank you, and jump on.
Next, I would like to call up Lieutenant James McPully and Sergeant Daniel Kern to be sworn in to their new ranks.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three, one forty-two, authorization, Superintendent James McPully to lieutenant.
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three, one forty-three, authorization, Superintendent Daniel Kern to sergeant.
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Yes.
Speaker Fuhrman.
Sergeant Kern completed his bachelor's degree in criminal justice in two thousand and four from Dowling College. In two thousand and two, while in college, Kern began dispatching full-time for the Hopacan Police Department. After college, Kern continued to dispatch for Hopacan full-time until two thousand and six, when he was hired as a police officer in Andover Township. In two thousand and fourteen, Sergeant Kern transferred to the Hopacan Police Department as a patrol officer. During Kern's time in Hopacan, he has been a member of the firearms unit, a field training officer, and did three years undercover work in the drug enforcement. In the course of his career, he has received the Mother Against Drug Driving Award four times, a Valor Award in two thousand and thirteen, Exceptional Service Award in two thousand and fifteen and sixteen, Hopacan Officer of the Year in two thousand and sixteen, and New Jersey Narcotic Enforcement Officer in two thousand and twenty. I know Kern's knowledge and experience will lead our department in a positive direction, and we're honored to have him. After completing his associate degree in criminal justice, James McPully was hired by the Hopacan Police Department in two thousand and seven. Lieutenant McPully worked in the patrol division as well as undercover for the first ten years of his career before being promoted to sergeant in two thousand and seventeen. Lieutenant McPully was a road sergeant until he transferred into the position of detective sergeant in June of two thousand and twenty-two. During McPully's years in the department, he became a firearms instructor, eventually taking over as the supervising firearms instructor, a drug recognition expert, a field training officer, and a field training coordinator. He has received the Mother Against Drug Driving Award four times, New Jersey Top Gun Award in two thousand and twelve, Honorable Service Award in two thousand and thirteen, Exceptional Service Award in two thousand and fourteen, Officer of the Year in two thousand and fifteen. And now, in two thousand and twenty-three, I'm proud to announce his promotion to lieutenant. Will the family please come forward?
I, James McPully.
I, James B. Tully.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That will support the Constitution of the United States.
That will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the government.
And to the government.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That will impartially.
And I will impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties of the officer lieutenant. Of the officer lieutenant.
According to the test of my ability.
According to the test of my ability.
To help the God.
So I'll meet you.
Congratulations. I.
I.
Daniel Kern.
Daniel Kern.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That will support the Constitution of the United States.
That will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the government.
And to the government.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That will impartially.
That will impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the officer sergeant.
Of the officer sergeant.
According to the test of my ability.
According to the test of my ability.
To help the God.
To help the God.
We're very proud of our speaking partners. As what you just saw, they do us proud. And I've always bragged about them. They're the best. They're the best in performance, and I think they're the best looking.
This concludes our ceremony. I want to thank the mayor, council, friends, family, and town residents for all your support. We wouldn't be able to do this without you.
Congratulations to our police force that was privileged to watch and to witness. Just want to bring your attention to some upcoming dates and events at the Paccam Fury Center. On September twelfth, from seven to eight-thirty, we have the return of the Hope Canter Support Group. So if anyone would like to attend that, that is totally free. That's everything at the center. On September fourteenth, from three to seven PM, we have the Center for Prevention. She'll be coming to lend any assistance to any families in Sussex County. But she also brings Narcan kits, because there is a lot of demand for Narcan training. So she can do that on the spot, provide you with a certificate and a Narcan kit before you leave. So that'll be next Thursday the fourteenth, from three to seven PM. On September eighteenth, from six-thirty to eight-thirty, we have the return of Meet the Mayor Night. So if there's anyone that would like to have a conversation with the mayor, any questions that you have, please come to the center at six-thirty on September eighteenth, and the mayor will be more than happy to sit and talk with you about anything that you want. On September twentieth, from ten AM to two PM, we will have the Journey Bus outside of the parking lot of the community center. So again, if there is any connection you need with the county, the Journey Bus will be there, and they are very effective in that location. So just wanted to let you know all of that. And that's it for now, Mayor.
Thank you. Sure. Mayor, all I'd like to do is thank all the police officers for the outstanding job they've done throughout the years, and also congratulate the two individuals. and also congratulate the two individuals who were promoted tonight. And a special shout out to Lieutenant Rojack for his twenty-five years of service to this town. And we wish him our most grateful in his retirement, that he will be safe and have a great life in retirement. Just want to go on to a reminder that on the nine eleven of this ceremony in Fireman's Park, which is at Borough Hall to commemorate the two thousand one nine eleven attack. But just one correction in the calendar, it listed at eleven A M., the actual time is ten A M. So correction on the calendar, the ceremony will start at ten A M.
That's all, Mayor. Thank you. Brad Durup?
I would also like to say congratulations to all the promotions in the police department. We have a great police department, great officers, and I want to thank you for their, thank them for their service. A week and a half ago, we had a fire committee meeting, and you'll see some stuff on the agenda tonight, going to reject a bid that came through, and then set up for rebidding it and also setting up some funding for it. So hopefully, everything's going to go smoothly, we'll save a little money, and the fire department will get in some trouble. That's it.
Thank you. Brad Durup?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, to risk being redundant, I certainly want to congratulate and thank all of our police force that received awards. Most specifically, I want to congratulate Lieutenant Wotak on his retirement, and Lieutenant Ben Kelly and Sergeant Kern on their promotions. Starting with environmental, the Environmental Commission obviously is getting ready for HOPACON Days, which is this Saturday, September ninth, it officially starts at twelve o'clock. There will be people there earlier starting to set up. That was the brunt of a lot of their conversation in the last meeting. Couple of upcoming events very soon, September sixteenth is Shred Day, and September twenty-third is from nine to twelve is the Townwide Clean-Up. And they also had some conversations regarding sustainable jersey, invasive species, and Witten Park. From recreation, recreation has actually had two meetings in the last month, one of them most specifically for HOPACON Days. The first meeting, they discussed, they're already starting to get ready for basketball. They appointed a new director this year, it's the same gentleman that did it last year. He did a great job, the gentleman's name is Sean O'Malley. The facility usage forms are in. They also talked about a new field request that they got, and they had some conversation finalizing street hockey spring season. For HOPACON Days, what's going on right now, there's going to be popcorn there, freezer pops, water, hot dogs, all going to be given away, there's games for the young children, they have two bouncy houses coming in. I think it's going to be great. As I understand it, the marching band is going to be there doing a dump tank, is that correct? That's what they have.
I didn't know about that.
Okay, maybe you're in it. Anyway, a lot of that was subject to other organizations, but that's the word that they had at the time. Everybody's looking forward to HOPACON Days, I'm sure it'll be a great event, that's all, Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry, one last thing, not a committee report, but I'm happy to see our high school football team is doing very well this year, right now they're two and oh. They are in Fort Lee this Friday, so if you want a nice drive and see a nice football game, you can go to Fort Lee. The following Friday, September fifteenth, they are home again versus Dover. So that could be a good game, so kudos to them, thank you.
Thank you. Brad Durup?
Chamber of Commerce, our next meeting is this Friday, September eighth. The next B to B breakfast is September twelfth. The Young Professionals Night Out is September thirteenth. Big event up at the Sussex Fairgrounds, the Sussex County Day, that's on September seventeenth. I'll be up there representing HOPACON. Our next B to B or after hours is on September twenty-eighth. Over at the Sussex County Municipal Utilities Authority, if you missed the town paper shredding, when the next paper shredding at the M U A is September fifteenth.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris Durup?
First, I'd like to be redundant as well and say how impressed and proud I am of our wonderful police department and all promotions and so forth. I find them all to be wonderful, wonderful people, and the interactions that I've had. It's very, so exciting to live in a town that actually has a police department, and they're really quality, so I want to say thank you to them. Safely Back Home is moving forward again, we've already succeeded in doing, as you probably all know, the school and the Smile Homes. However, we're going to reach out again to the school, to the children, to talk about their grandparents, if anybody has problems that they might need the tool of Safely Back Home, which is a label on your arm that helps people that wander or run away. Also, we're reaching out again to the seniors in all facets to reassess, do they want to have this tool to help them? We're not getting as much reaction as we thought we would. So if anybody knows anyone that needs that service, please feel free to reach out to either myself, Brad, or the Wellness Center, who coordinate it, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Dave, do you have a committee report?
Thank you, Mayor, to pick up on the comments that the police department, I can tell you that we have a good, deep management of lieutenant and sergeant candidates. I have the opportunity and pleasure to meet, along with the chief of police and the captain of police with the candidates, on the civil service list for lieutenant and sergeant, and we can be confident that as additional vacancies in those ranks come up, we have a good bench to choose from. The Environmental Commission is formulating a new program, an Adopt a Storm Drain Program, that will be formally presented to the council at our September twentieth meeting. I know that they're looking to get some information out on the Saturday at HOPACON Day about it, and basically, they're modeling it off of some of the main team programs throughout the state, and specifically out of the Glen Rock program in Bergen County. And D P W, they have recently completed field grooming at the baseball and softball field. The air conditioner has been replaced at the senior center. Power washing of the senior center has occurred, and the exterior is on. They've been involved with roadside milling. On the P files update, and now as well, the tanks have been delivered, the backwash line has been installed, plumbing has begun, and immediate delivery is scheduled this week between nine five and nine eight. And that's what I have for our time, Mayor.
Public comment, I entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public.
So move, second.
All right. An opportunity is given to the public for commentary, comments are limited to one comment, but no more than five minutes, welcome public.
Good evening to the governing body, my name is Art Fandetto. I do not reside at Two Windsor Avenue, which is where the Board of Education office is, but I feel like I lived there recently. I'd like to quickly to talk about our referendum on September twenty-sixth. Our school district has four schools, the youngest of which was built in nineteen eighty, two of the other schools were built in the late sixties, and one was built in nineteen seventy-one. Many of the items in the school that are on this referendum, there are twenty-five projects, about twenty-five different projects, many of those items are based on replacement, for example, roofs. The windows at Seven Windsor Avenue are original, we cannot get parts to fix that. H V A C systems that are original to the building. There's no air conditioning in the building. The H V A C upgrades will provide air conditioning in the projects that are listed. This is a difficult circumstance for the town because we are asking the voters to approve a twenty-six million dollar referendum. It is offset by thirty-three percent of state aid, and you know that we've taken a beating with state aid, and this is a decent thing, it reduces the cost of the project, not significantly, but a decent amount. I've sent information to the governing body. I was honored that Mayor Francis and Mr. Shingalar attended one of my meetings on the referendum and what it means. Essentially, it's a yes or no vote for people to decide whether or not the questions we put forward are appropriate. I'm not asking people to vote yes, I only ask them to educate themselves. I'm very hopeful that the people who review the information on our website know that it's the truth, and that I'm trying to be as transparent as possible. As I said, I'm not asking people to vote yes, every presentation I make, I ask people to educate themselves. I would appreciate from the governing body at their convenience, anytime, constructive criticism on what you know about the project and what you'd like to know. You know my email, you know where, I don't live, but I'm there a lot. God bless you all, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we ask a question, Mayor, for one? With all due respect and stuff, with the referendum and everything, I'm assuming, did the whole school board vote for this, for the referendum, to support this?
Who is in eight oh, one extension, I believe.
One extension, okay. Did, did you guys discuss much about the porzio study regarding buildings and everything? Because I've done some researching and stuff, and it comes up in the face that you're higher.
What about the feasibility study?
Yeah, feasibility study for the buildings, and they paid a lot of money for that.
The feasibility study was undertaken to ascertain whether or not the closing of the Tulsa Trail School would be a possibility, and it was, and the board did spend a lot of money on that. And that's a very, that's a very much a possibility should this referendum go down. I can't give, I can't put forward what will happen if the referendum fails because it looks like I'm trying to sell. But that conversation went on long before I came back about closing the Tulsa Trail School, and that very well may happen. Interestingly, the roof of the Tulsa Trail School is in bad condition, and even if we close it, A, we lose an exit education facility. B, believe it or not, I don't know if it's going up again for the second time in two years, and that hasn't happened in a long, long time. And I believe the numbers that I'll get tomorrow are going to show a significant increase as opposed to a small increase last year. I've always said, in my literature that I've sent out, that closing the Tulsa Trail would be more dependent upon enrollment than upon the feasibility study. I'm going to say this upfront and honestly, before I left the first time, I gave the board a three-page document that said we can close the Tulsa Trail School. It said the same thing as the feasibility study. It was a tough decision.
Interesting. Thank you.
Art, I have just a couple of questions here. On the literature that I've seen, it's basically talking about a twenty-six million dollar bond referendum, and nowhere have I seen anything about the interest aspect of it.
I can, I can, they'll do that very quickly, so. We estimated the bond, if the referendum passed, the board would go out and sell bonds, municipal act rebonds, for the amount of money of the referendum. We estimated a four percent, that's a high estimate on purpose. Everything we did, we rounded off to a higher circumstance, given inflation and the time that it's going to take to do all this. We estimated four percent. Interestingly, a district similar to us in another county just had a referendum task during the last, having the time for referendum. They got a three point six five percent bond rate. The bond rates tend to be a little bit better than the mortgage rates and things like that. We don't, we planned for four, and we weighed it carefully. I hope we don't want to be four, voting for a foundation supply. We use Phoenix, a company that is well renowned across the state.
I got from the accountant that you're four percent, and that, as you're saying, may be high, on this twenty-six million dollar bond, would be twelve million, six hundred sixty thousand, and if you get state aid, that would knock it down to eight million, four hundred and seven thousand, thirty dollars. If that's numbers, kind of, it was quite ridiculous.
My numbers are on paper, I'm pleading, I stand in front of the group, remembering to pay million dollars is not going to be something very strong.
And then my last question, I don't hold it up, is real quick, I've had people ask me, why the special election that you have to pay for versus in the general election?
Two reasons. A, we wanted to get it as soon as possible because of the potential of inflation and rates. B, we were the last district to be approved for September because there was a backlog in the facilities projects. We would not have been able to have a November referendum. There were two backlogs, we wouldn't have gotten approvals, it would have gone the next calendar year.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, how many students total are in the district right now, enrolled right now?
We ended at about fourteen hundred and thirty last year, and I expect that number to approach this year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I know a fire was going to be the land court, that the referendum was non-binding, is the school board referendum binding? Secondly, I, I don't know, were you going to answer? Okay. I'd like to congratulate and thank very much the police department for the years of service, and for getting care of residents in this town, and for saving as many lives. This is one of the few times we get to actually see what they do, where it's spelled out there, and they get an award for it. They don't do it for the awards, but we appreciate the fact that we get to see the police get back. We also have a recent hire, it's of August thirty-first, and I would like to know the title and the job requirements, because it's listed as two different things. And is the administrator allowed to hire without the approval of the mayor or council? Thank you.
Welcome.
I just, uh, I want to say, uh, in the past, uh, two months ago, we said that we still have another grade ease planning because our licensing is going to be up the first of the year rather than in July. Have the council planned for another grade ease planning? And also, I'd just like to thank you for the extra week collection, which you have, because it was very helpful for a lot of residents.
Do you think everybody joke about twenty-six too far out, you know, I'm on the board of education, but I'm not representing for today. Mr. Shingalar, you brought a great point about closing Tulsa Trail, that's a popular opinion, right? But the question I have for you, you don't have to answer this, is would you be comfortable sending seventh graders through twelfth graders to the high school? And that's one of the things that we have to think about when we talk about closing schools. Another thing is, everything that Art brought up here was fact. And all I ask is, for this panel, forever as long your term is, to continue to educate yourself and speak a fact. So far, I've heard a lot of different things from a lot of different people in town, and I know how that rumor mill goes. But firsthand, Mr. Young, at football the other day, I heard you telling parents that we have money in a bank account to fix the facilities.
That's not what I said.
It's not a true statement, okay? I've heard that, from this administration, that we can fix the buildings for sixty thousand dollars for the gym. It's misinformation. Our superintendent has tried to get in front of our seniors to educate people, and we've been blocked because it's been said that this is a political event. Nothing about schools is political, or should be politicized, okay? If everybody here is okay with spreading falsities and having a roof cave on somebody's head because there's four roofs on an old building, it's fine. If everybody on this panel is okay with spreading falsities, that if I wanted to walk into the middle school, all I would have to do is kick the metal door frame in, and I can do whatever I wanted to. If you guys are okay with that, then continue to do it. I know nobody wants to have their taxes go up, I don't either. But something has to change here. Miss, you made a comment, right? It's great to have a police department in town. It is, we have a great one. We might not have a school. We'll have a police department, but we won't have a school. So please, if you want to vote no, vote no, but keep the facts the facts. Stop spreading the falsities and stop politicizing this event, it's not a political event. We're not sitting on thirty million, asking for another twenty-six because we want to, because we want to build a nice facility. We want to fix the facilities. We want to bring the school systems back, we have people here who are doing the right thing, who really care, okay?
Since you brought up me, I would like to say directly, I mean, all these facts that I'm talking about and asking questions of Art, just to pray so everyone can hear, you specifically asked me a question about moving seventh and eighth graders into the high school. Personally.
Eighth graders there, I'm not.
Well, seventh graders. Personally, I grew up in Fountain Brook. We had seventh, eighth, all the way to twelfth in one school, and it was fun. So, I, you know, I don't have a problem with saying I'm okay with that, because I grew up that way, it was fun. Um, but when it comes down to money and other stuff with, with the school, we have to look at what the school's giving our kids compared to, you know, what we're actually getting from them, in, in the end, that's all. So, but we're getting information, that's the whole thing.
Yeah, and, and the only reason why I bring up is because I know when we got moved, eighth graders to the high school, it was a popular decision.
Oh, it's never a popular decision.
And, and, and if we decide to do seventh graders.
Yeah.
I think the enrollment numbers that Art's talking about is going to get, is just going to go down, because people are going to leave. People like myself, who care, who volunteer, who have things, we're just going to go with that.
Thank you. More public?
Winner two, one ten, Staten Trail. I grew up in Birken County in Ramsey, and my father was superintendent of schools, probably until I graduated. In fact, I immediately promoted to superintendent of schools the year I graduated. It was pretty much drilled in my head every Wednesday night when we headed out or whatever for a Board of Ed meeting, that the confrontation and the fact the schools was never a town issue, it's confrontation is usually with the Board of Ed. If the council doesn't understand that the foundation of a town is your school system, and that's what draws people in, I don't understand who you want moving into this town. Houses going for five hundred thousand dollars now compared to when I moved in twenty years ago, twenty-two years ago, they were two hundred or less. The school system has gone down, we need to build it back up. And I only hope that people go out and vote and that the small percentage that does show up in this town that votes, and I hope every one of you goes, votes yes. Because if our town continues to disintegrate on the school level, there will be no PacCom. It will be a transient village, no one will be here, my opinion. But this is how I was raised and this is what was instilled in me by a man who was passionate about the education system. And he worked his whole life for this amongst my mother, brother, sister, all being teachers, me having a degree in education. There should be no question that this referendum should go through. There should be no question on any of your minds why you're questioning why it's going through. Thank you.
More public?
Hi, um, Paragon, one two seven, Marshall Trail, I moved here last month. My son, my son likes to come to town council meetings, society, and I'm just excited to be a part of the expression. But I did listen to the people's speech. Um, I did move to go back home, um, not for the schools. Um, I came here, I'm sure I got my son at a place in the Nipsey Valley as a joy school student because of the school's reputation. I did grow up in that home, so I did go to kindergarten through eighth grade in one building, which I'm not familiar with, why would you want kindergarten, it's like eighth years. So I did, like, I was, I did a big deal at second grade early in the high school. Um, I'm forty-second, so I played not far from there for the seven years, and come from the Lush Valley School district. And this, this school does have reputation. And people don't want to work here because of this school, and there'll be some less than forty schools. So, but I do love the town, and I'm happy to be part of that.
More public? You ready now? Move to bring back.
Sir.
Call roll, no, just call favor. Aye. Aye. Dave, we're up to get back here on the ladies clinic, I'm sure that government, but I didn't hear it. For a minute, uh, entertain a.
Yeah. I want to make a comment. Uh, my name was mentioned in a conversation that was apparently overheard, and what I said was that, um, the high school, the scoreboard at the high school game field broke last year in late October. And I'm frustrated that out of a thirty-five plus million dollar budget, there wasn't some money in capital reserve or somewhere else that that scoreboard couldn't have been repaired or replaced, at least with a base model similar to what we have before this game season. It's still broken, I feel that's an embarrassment. We're now operating with a temporary portable scoreboard that's, I don't know, four by five.
Didn't the referendum?
To me, that's not acceptable. If it broke yesterday, that would be different, but it didn't, it's been broken for ten months. That, that was the frustr- that's my frustration and that's the comment.
Uh, and then motion to approve the minutes of eight sixteen, twenty twenty-three?
Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Hoffricham?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three, one thirty-nine, Bill's win.
Does anyone need anything to be moved or discussed?
Not hearing any, I'll move the bill into the Senate.
Second. Call roll.
Mr. Hoffricham?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Smith, yes. Mr. Young?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So move. Second. Call roll, please.
Mr. Hoffricham?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Smith, yes. Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three, one forty-one, authorization to hire air group LLC for senior center air conditioning. So move. Second. Call roll, please.
Uh, Mr. Hoffricham?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Smith, yes. Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three, one forty-four, authorization to hire Kerry Roselet as record support technician. So move. Second. Call roll, please.
Mr. Hoffricham?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Smith, yes. And Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three, one forty-five, recommending procurement of fire apparatus for a PacCon fire department, North River Engine Company number two. So move. Second. Call roll, please.
Mr. Hoffricham?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Hell yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three, one forty-six, authorizing an interlocal agreement with the Houston Galveston Area Council for the procurement of a fire apparatus. So move. Second. Call roll, please.
Mr. Hoffricham?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three, one forty-seven, authorizing emergency appropriations for sound payment on fire apparatus. So move. Second. Call roll, please.
Mr. Hoffricham?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Smith, yes. Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three, one forty-eight, rejecting all bids for mini bumper bid number twenty-three dash oh nine. So move. Second. Call roll, please.
Mr. Hoffricham?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three, one forty-nine, authorizing a credit due to an overcharge made for property owner in block three one six oh five, lot twelve. So move. Second.
Mr. Hoffricham?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three, one fifty, rejecting bids for pumping services bid number twenty-three dash oh nine. So move. Second. Call roll, please.
Mr. Hoffricham?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Smith? Yes. Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three, one fifty-one, au- authorizing a three-year agreement with Everbridge Incorporated for upgrade to the Everbridge notification, which is Nixal communication system, including resident connection, evergreen mass, mass notification bay, and geo fencing capability. So move. Second. Call roll, please.
Mr. Hoffricham?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Smith, yes. Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ordinance of introduction. Okay, okay, uh, one more resolution. Resolution twenty twenty-three, one fifty-three, authorizing payment plan and adjustment for store account three oh three, one three zero zero one dash four for property owner in block three oh three, one three, lot three. So move. Second. Call roll, please.
Mr. Hoffricham?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Smith, yes. And Mr. Young?
Yes.
Now, I, ordinance twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, bond ordinance, acquisition of fire apparatus vehicle for fire and safety services. So move. Second. Call roll, please.
Mr. Hoffricham?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Smith, yes. Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, chapter one eighteen, non-bought rapid entry system. So move. Second. Call roll, please.
Mr. Hoffricham?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Smith, yes. Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ordinance of final airing, ordinance twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, smoke detector inspection fee. So move. Second. Uh, open and duck to progress, work any comments? Move to bring it back?
Second.
Call favor. Aye. Call roll, please.
Mr. Hoffricham?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-one, twenty twenty-three, ending chapter one twenty, fire prevention. So move. Second. Hold in that, more public for questions to comment? Move to bring it back?
Second.
Call favor. Aye. We're back. All business?
Uh, I'm going to get a fish about.
Oh, call roll, all right.
Mr. Hoffricham?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Young?
Yes.
All business? No business. I don't have many comments, uh, except as you can see, we're very proud of our police department, they do what they're proud of. And if you want to say it again, uh, there's all this chatter about our police department, what we've had to do in the past year or two. The subject of dispatch, the subject of a bunch of other stuff came up. And all I'll ask you to do is take a look at what we have. Never mind the, the, the rhetoric, the rhetoric, and I'll let not, people hear about it. The fact of the matter is, when something comes to our attention, we really take a good, long, hard look at it. Sometimes it looks harder than you might think, but we look at it.